Good afternoon, this is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We are here to hear multiple executive appointments. I will go in order that I have you here. When you hear your name called, if you don't mind, just step up to the mic. Tell us about yourself and tell us why you want to serve on the respective board or commission that you're being appointed to. We will start with EA twenty-two dash zero one five one. Our Peter Bodie, a member of the Police Accountability Board from District One. You can come up to him.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to come here today. My name is Ambassador Peter Bodie. I'm a retired U.S. Ambassador from the State Department. Been a Baltimore resident for about six years now and spent thirty-eight years in the State Department, traveling around the world where I did a lot of work on democracy, human rights, and the enforcement of human rights and the codification of police training to make sure human rights take place. So I bring a fair amount of experience having done this in countries like Pakistan and Nepal. After I retired in December two thousand seventeen, I was called back to chair an Accountability Review Board by the State Department on the incidents that were happening to our staff in Cuba. This was a six-month effort. I had a number of experts with me. We interviewed about two hundred people and issued a report with thirty-two recommendations, which were accepted by the Secretary. That was then brought back to see that those, all the recommendations were implemented. I want to stress here that we were looking at, did the State Department do everything it could to protect its people and take care of them once they were injured in these attacks? We were not trying to find out who was behind them. Finally, since my residency began here in Baltimore, I've been president of the Fels Point Residents Association. I did that for two years. I've been very engaged in the Safety Committee for the FPRA. I've worked very closely with the southeastern district police officials, working closely with our Zeke Cohen and his efforts, and working, meeting with city officials such as the Commissioner and the Mayor to see what could be done. My reason for wanting to be on this committee is I have learned in my years of experience, no organization can do well without oversight and the provision of accountability. And I also want to see that, as justice is carried out here in Baltimore, it's applied equally to all neighborhoods and all groups in Baltimore. I'll stop there and happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And after you present, you don't, you do not have to stick around. You're welcome to if you'd like. We do take votes at the end, but you're not obligated to stick around. It will not affect the outcome. The next up is EA twenty-two dash zero one five two, Megan Kenny, a member of the Police Accountability Board from District Twelve.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Megan Kenny. I was born and raised in California, and I ended up...
A little closer.
A little closer, sorry. Is that okay? Can everybody hear me? I was born and raised in California, and I ended up on the East Coast, going to college at Yale University, where I got my philosophy degree. I was an educator for about ten years and then decided I wanted to get more behind the scenes in policy development. So that's how I ended up in Baltimore. I went to Johns Hopkins and got my master's degree in public policy. I moved here in two thousand nine, and I've stayed ever since. I'm here in Baltimore by choice, and I really enjoy it here. I want to help cultivate a world where everybody feels safe, and I think that that's an important part of a safe community, is making sure that everybody around us treats us safely and with integrity. And also, my policy background is intertwined with my trade as a data analyst. And I think my background as a data analyst brings a different lens to information collection and analysis, and through that I can help contribute information research so that sound policy development can happen. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero one five three, Stephanie Lee, a member of Police Accountability Board from District Four.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Lee, and I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore City. I grew up in northwest Baltimore, where I attended Mordecai Gist Elementary School, Garrison Junior High School, and Northwestern Senior High School, where I served as a class historian. I attended Frostburg State University, while it was college then, majoring in sociology, social science, and the University of Baltimore, receiving my master's degree in criminal justice administration. I worked for ten years as a parole and probation officer for the state of Maryland, and twenty-five years as a United States probation and pretrial services officer for the District of Maryland, upon retiring as a supervising United States probation officer. I also served as a training coordinator for the agency, employment coordinator, community service coordinator. As a supervisor, I was responsible for coordinating the SEGIS training, GSA cars, and harvest for the hungry. I reside in the Govens Community since nineteen eighty-eight in the mutual housing development, where I serve as the Vice President of the Board and the Membership Chair. I attend the historic Sharp Street Memorial United Methodist Church since childhood and volunteer greatly in the Upton Community. I also am a member of the Baltimore Chapter of the Continental Society, Inc., an organization that provides services for children, and a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter, which provides services to the citizens of Baltimore City. With thirty-five years of criminal justice professional, as a criminal justice professional, having had an opportunity to do right alongs with the police department at Southern, Eastern, Northern, Northeast, and Northwestern districts, I have had an opportunity to see our police department individuals at work, and I think that I bring to this a knowledge of the criminal justice system and a, hopefully, to help make sure that people are treated equally as they are come before our police department.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero one five four, Antoine Burton, a member of Police Accountability Board, District Six.
Good evening. My name is Antoine Burton. I serve as the pastor of Changing Lives Ministries of Baltimore. Also serve as the president of the We Are Us Men's Movement here in the city of Baltimore. Looking forward to serving with this committee. Have the opportunity to engage with the citizens and residents of Baltimore at least five, three to five times a week, so we have an understanding as to what they are dealing with, what they go through. I do want to say while I do know for a fact that the Baltimore City Police Department, they are striving to make great changes, we just want to make sure that there's oversight. We want to make sure that the people of this city have a voice at the table. Just want to make sure that they're treated with respect and that things continue to move forward in the path to where Baltimore can get its charm back. So I'm excited about that. So again, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I must leave early. My wedding anniversary is today, so my wife and I got to go celebrate. Thank you.
Certainly dismissed.
Thank you.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a comment before he leaves. I just want to say, first, I just want to thank you, Pastor, for, you know, just continuing the leadership that you continue to do in this city and helping our youth, not just in the sixth district, but this pastor has just given loads of his time and effort in just helping the young people and older adults. I mean, just very well-rounded, trustworthy person that I think will be asset to, on this board. So thank you for adding this to the work that you continue to do in the sixth district and in our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero one five five, Dr. Doris Minor Terrell, a member of Police Accountability Board, District Twelve.
Hi, good evening and thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak before you shortly today, and thank you for even considering me for this position. I am a thirty-year educator. I've spent that time in education in the specialties around disabilities, including cognitive, behavioral, and physical disabilities. My diagnostic and prescriptive work was centered around outcomes for dysfunctional behaviors that weren't appropriate for the environment. I am currently the Chair for the Broadway East Community, so I am boots on the ground for what activities take place there. I strongly believe that for each behavior, there's a reason that that is taking place. I am a person who believes that when we make a decision, it needs to be appropriate for the activity that you are looking at at the time. What I find today, just as a resident and a lifelong resident of Baltimore City, we are making decisions that are not always in the best interest of where we want to go. You set the goals and their barriers for people not being able to do that, what they want to do. So what I think would be my role on this board is to make sure we are clear about why things take place, and we are open to change and looking for how we can make that happen for people. Every person deserves the opportunity, and we should be committed to making sure that happens. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Ms. Megan and to Doris Minor Terrell, I look forward to your leadership, but I'm going to say this to everybody who probably would be appointed to this board. I hope it don't be just an advisory board. You got to have some strength to this board, because if we just have an advisory board, it's nothing going to change in this city until we make it strong. And to all the members who are appointed, that has to change, because right now, the police advisory board is weak, and everybody in here know it. We getting some new leadership, and I think everybody in here need to talk about how we strengthen the police accountability board. Thank you.
Councilman, I'd like to add one statement behind that. For all of the council members that I see here today that I have previously had an interaction with, I do know that you believe in change, and I do know you believe in fairness at the table, which means that accountability will take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minor Terrell. Next up is EA twenty-two dash zero one five six, Mr. Jamal Turner, a member of Police Accountability Board, Second District.
All right, hello, everybody. Thank you all for having me here today. So I'll keep it brief. I'm a lifelong resident here in Baltimore City. Born and raised, I love my crabs and my ravens. I am a financial advisor licensed by trade, but also the co-director of the No Leader Project, a community-based organization here in Baltimore. I am co-chair of Baltimoreians for Educational Equity, and I also sit on the Board for Fund for Educational Excellence, and also the co-chair of the newly formed Frankfurt Community Association. So my entire life, I've geared around improving the conditions of those that I help and also those that are within our boundaries of our city. I really believe that Baltimore has an extremely bright future ahead of us, as long as we take the time to break down the things that aren't working for us, to address them, to fix them, to have some accountability for, of course, not just the police officers, but for this instance, we're talking about the police. So accountability, transparency, and ensuring that as a collective, we're able to make the changes that, Mr. Councilman Stokes mentioned, that, you know, we have to make sure we aren't just advising, but we're having an active role in how we're addressing the problems within our city. But as promised, I want to keep it brief. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Colleagues, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Turner. Appreciate it. Next up is EA twenty-two dash zero one five seven, Jasmine O. Riggins, a member of Police Accountability Board, Third District. Colleagues, please note, there is a written letter that was included in the bill file for Mr. Riggins. He's unable to attend the hearing today. We will move to the next one. EA twenty-three dash zero one five nine, Mary Su Onyanaka, a member of Police Accountability Board, Fourteenth District. Please forgive me if I did not pronounce that appropriately, ma'am.
You didn't do bad. It's okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Su Onyanaka. I'm a member of Coldstream Homestead Montebello Board. I moved to Baltimore when I was seventeen years old to attend Johns Hopkins University, and when I chose the school, I chose the city. I knew I wasn't going back to New Jersey, and in two thousand and six, I moved to Coldstream Homestead Montebello, and I bought my house on a thirty-year drug corner. Didn't realize that was the case. So over the last sixteen years, I've had the opportunity to work with the police, as well as my neighbors, to help clear that corner. I have been a very active member of my community and been on a variety of boards, including ones with Morgan. I'm currently on the Advisory Council for the Hopkins Credit Union. Over the years, I have worked, I worked with the state of Maryland, with the Office of the Inspector General, where I worked with a variety of investigators as we looked for fraud, waste, and abuse, and I sent investigators out to places that, you know, I'd analyze using data to identify potentials in fraud, waste, and abuse. So I do have experience with retired police officers and investigators, as well as data and, you know, also on the personal level, working with the police as we help clear my corner. Not all of my interactions with the police have been positive, but there have been a good balance. You know, sometimes they've been negative, sometimes they've been positive. Throughout it, I have been very committed to being an advocate for what we as a community could be. That has been the singular thread through all that I have done, and I see that in Baltimore. I saw it when I was seventeen years old. I'm forty-five? Yeah, forty-five now. I had to think about that, y'all. We're in twenty twenty-three. So I have been advocating for us as a city, as my community, as growth for my community, my neighbors, and I know we can do more. We are on the precipice of something great, and I want to be part of making this city more equitable for everyone and for us to feel, all of us to feel safe, both from the police and from each other, like, you know. So I would love an opportunity to be part of this board. I think that I have an interesting perspective that I would bring to the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Colleagues, Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for applying. I just want to mention to my colleagues that Mary Su has the best qualification here from all the applicants in the Fourteenth District. Obviously, with some investigative experience, she can look at all sides of, you know, the situation and also be a very fierce advocate for her side. So I'm thrilled to nominate her and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, EA twenty-three dash zero one six zero, Ms. Crisale El De Los Santos Polanco, a member of Police Accountability Board, District One.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Crisale Elizabeth De Los Santos. I am, I was originally born in Dominican Republic, came to Baltimore when I was twelve, and I became a child of Baltimore. Baltimore City has really made me to the young woman that I am today. I graduated from National Academy Foundation, then went to Baltimore City Community College, where I founded the first immigrant club, and we raised a lot of money for immigrant students to be able to access higher education. After that, currently now, I am a student at the University of Baltimore. I also work at CASA as a youth program and education manager, where I work with immigrant youth from both Baltimore City and Baltimore County. And I'm here today mainly because as a youth leader and activist that I've been in Baltimore City since I arrived in two thousand and ten, most of you might not remember my face, but I've been here with the translator and whoever, I wanted to make sure that youth voices were heard. I think that youth deserve a seat at the table, youth deserve to be represented, and as a woman of color, Latina, in Baltimore City, I've seen many struggles, and for me, they have been positive, but for my peers, it has been a lot different. So I just want to make sure that the Baltimore City that I see as my home is the Baltimore City that all the youth in Baltimore City can experience. I'm not a person that is going to agree with most of the people and their point of view, which is why I think that, you know, it's, this is why I'm encouraged to be here, because I'm really willing to be that voice that's going to disagree with people when things need to be changed and things need to be done. And other than that, I also want to make sure that immigrant voices are well represented, because they are, we are a big part of this city, and usually, when it comes to representation, it's not shown that way. So I'm eager to be here, and thank you for considering me to be part of the board. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, next up, EA twenty-three dash zero one six one, Harold Madison, a member of the Police Accountability Board, District Twelve.
Good evening. I'm Harold Lafayette Madison Jr., lifelong resident of East Baltimore. I bring to the board special quality, which is ethical standards. Past member of the Baltimore Rotary Club, seventeen years involved with those guys. Past member, Chairman for the Hopkins Division of Boys Scouts of America. I'm now the current president of the New South Clifton Park Community Association. My qualities are ethical standards.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, Harold also is in the twelfth district of my district, and I want to thank everybody but those persons who would want to do this, because it's not going to be easy, but I know those three and everybody else in here have the qualifications to really make a change in terms of this Police Accountability Board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. EA twenty-three dash zero one six two, Brian Upsher, a member of Police Accountability Board, District Three.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Upsher. I came to Baltimore in two thousand and three, when I was still in high school. I graduated from the City College High School. I, thank, thank you very much. I also graduated from Morgan State University and University of Baltimore School of Law. I then went on to clerk on the Circuit Court for Baltimore City for the Honorable Lynn Stewart Mays, who's still on the bench, and served some time here in City Hall, working in the law department, and now I work in DC. I have spent a lot of time in Baltimore. I see it as my city, our city, and I really have a great love for it. I think there's so much opportunity here, so many wonderful people and great culture. One thing that I think we can all agree on and that we've made reference to a number of times is an issue in the community where police are not trusted or believed or respected, and quite honestly, that has a very negative impact on their ability to do their job. And because that is the truth, and because we understand that police are necessary, we want them to be able to protect us and to protect our property and to look after those we need looking after, we need to figure out a way to improve our system, and quite honestly, I want to be a part of that. So I applied to be on this board, and I'm very thankful and I am excited for the opportunity that being on this board will give to me, to serve this people of the great city that I love, and to also have an opportunity to give back to the very same community. So thank you. Are there any, any questions or?
Any questions? Councilman Stokes?
I don't have a question, but I go back and talk about how important this Police Accountability Board has to be strong, because we are getting ready to start, have a Hopkins police, their own police force. But I heard Hopkins say, well, we're going to go by Baltimore City Police Accountability Board. Well, if this board is weak, if this board is weak, and Hopkins saying they're going to use this board as their process to make sure the accountability and the strength is there, then we not getting anywhere. So that's why I keep emphasizing you have an opportunity to really make this board strong. But when I hear Hopkins talking about they're going to use the police, Baltimore City Police Accountability Board, and it's not strong, then there are some concerns now dealing with that new police force. So thank you.
And thank you for that. And just to, just to make a mention of it, I believe that we are going to do the best work that we can, being strong, sticking to our beliefs, and making sure that we are holding the police accountable. I think backing down from a fight would be a disservice to both, both ourselves as a board, as well as the entire city. So thank you very much for that comment, and I do agree with you a hundred percent.
Any other questions? I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last, but not least, Joshua Harris, EA twenty-three dash zero one six three, a member of the Police Accountability Board, District Nine.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I greet you on the heels of the holiday we just celebrated, Martin Luther King Day, which he called us all to service, and it's an honor to have the opportunity to serve on the Police Accountability Board. My name is Joshua Harris. I'm a resident of Ninth District, where I've been there for nearly a decade. Not born and raised in Baltimore, but this is the city that I've chosen, the city that I've chosen to raise my family in, and I love the city. I am the Vice President of the Baltimore City NAACP. I am the founder of Holland's Creative Placemaking, where we specialize in creating urban revitalization and urban renewal, using arts as a catalyst while minimizing cultural displacement. And my career and profession is in communication, specifically crisis communications, at the intersection of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I like to echo the sentiments of our Councilman, Councilman Stokes, and the importance of transparency, accountability, and responsibility. And for me, I'll never forget the very first time I was encountered with the police from an early dismissal, my freshman year of high school. My school was let out early, and I decided to go visit my friends at another school to meet them. So I rode my bike about two and a half, three miles to the school, and just as I got to the school, they were getting ready to get dismissed, and the police officer stopped me, threw me on the hood of his car, and searched me and frisked me for no reason, while the entire school was letting out and watching and laughing and pointing at me. I had no idea. I felt vulnerable, helpless, and didn't know what to do. I've also had encounters where I've worked with police officers in the community and know what it's like to have good officers that understand the importance of engaging the community correctly and not violating individuals' rights. And so I've seen it from both perspectives, and so for me, I like to ensure that there is accountability, transparency, and responsibility, and to simplify fairness. What does it look like to be fair and equitable? And so I hope that I have the opportunity to serve on this board and to bring my expertise, my background, and experience to serve the citizens of Baltimore.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you so much, and Joshua Harris, it's good to see you here today. I just wanted to say for the record, you know, a lot of talk in the city has been about police accountability post-two thousand and fifteen. What I can say about you is I remember seeing you on the grounds of activists prior to two thousand and fifteen, in the midst of two thousand and fifteen and the years following. And so again, your breadth of work on the nonprofit side, the work in the community, I think it's really critical, and your comments today really echo that. So glad to see you being nominated and hope to see support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to grill them, but...
Oh, no.
Any other questions? No. All right, thank you very much, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, without any objections, I'm going to move to, to move all the nominations as one vote, if that's okay with everybody? Any objections?
Second.
Okay. Do a roll call. We have it. Motion by Council Vice President, second by Councilman Conway. Yeah.
EA twenty-two oh one five one, Pina Bowley.
Oh one five two, Megan Kenny. Oh one five three, Stephanie Lee. Oh one five four, Antoine Burton. Oh one five five, Doris Minor Terrell.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Oh one five six, Jamal Turner. Oh one five seven, Jesmond Riggins. Oh one five nine, Mary Sue Onyanka. Oh one six oh, Chrisalay De Los Santos Blanco. Oh one six one, twenty-three oh one six one, Harold Madison. Twenty-three oh one six two, Brian Upsher. EA twenty-three oh one six three, Joshua Harris. Okay. Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett appears to be absent. Mr. Costello.
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, one absent, and these nominations can go to second read on Monday if that's the desire of the chair.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much, everybody, for, for coming. We are now adjourned.